All right, good afternoon. As we launch the meeting, I would like to give a little bit of information. This is the expansion meeting of the board of commissioners on March 20th, 2020. We have a few people on our agenda today. Before we get started, I would like to rearrange the items on the agenda just a little bit and make a motion that will move the contractor selection for the Justice Center off of this agenda until we've had the minutes and transfers of the meeting that happened yesterday. We may be able to talk about that, so that we can have further participation in that decision.
I'll second, and we'll move back to Monday?
To Monday, March 3rd. Okay, another special meeting?
Okay, well, another special meeting, because it's not a regular use.
Yeah, so you will have a special meeting on Monday, which is the X amount of days to do a lot of the finer presentation on Monday as well. So we'll have those two things on the agenda, but that is subject to change based on changing the health orders. Okay, any further discussion on that at this point?
On that change?
Yeah.
Not a lot of changes, no.
Okay, so seeing none, all those are favored?
Hi.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to number one, updating on the open and routine and possible extended four years.
Oh, sorry, Chair. I would like to add, I'm, the motion to delete, sorry, just making a, the motion to remove or table the legal, I'm sorry, the bid, the bid award, but I would like to also just add for the public's sake, the number one, we should have on there, Patty, if you would make a note, to specifically reference our resolution with the declaration and the renewal of the declaration that's outlined in the language of the declarations, we visited the set of dates, so we would like to have these meetings every Friday on Zoom per the resolution. So we have a new resolution today, I believe it'll be Resolution 2008, eight, okay, thank you very much. And I think that is all. We'll also hear a new revision of the health order that will accompany that resolution. I just wanted to add those details.
Okay, thank you. So with that, Colin, would you like to start?
Yes, so as of noon today, I did release a new public health order that goes into effect tonight at 5:00 p.m. It outlines what we will remain open and what needs to close, and essentially it is to keep essential businesses opening or staying open. We haven't heard anything else to fully shut down our communities. Point, obviously, we emphasize the fact that the state governor continues to push out orders, and as most folks know, I don't see them until we do see them, and then we're trying to figure out the endings from there. But at this point in time, we are closing all non-essential businesses at 5:00 p.m. tonight. We're also taking for, I don't know, for short-term rentals, hotels, motels, we are trying to figure our accounting currently of folks that are here, the message is please, if we have the ability to go back home, that is really great. We're asking all short-term rentals, motels, motels, et cetera. Once again, look at the order in completion to see where you or someone who knows might fall on that. We're asking them to have everyone vacate by Sunday at 5:00 p.m. The exception is, is for workers and/or contractors that are actually working here in our county, in our community, as well as the opportunity for anyone that might be coming in to help our community, whether it's in response to COVID-19, which is public health at this point, or if we have larger emergency as well. So there are some exceptions. We did push out a press release as well to try to simplify that. We've known that you can ask questions around that, so that order will go into effect tonight at 5:00 p.m. And with community businesses tomorrow, some will not have the ability to open due that they are not essential. And as far as the housing lodging, short-term rentals, they have until Sunday at noon to vacate.
Can you define for us a little bit non-essential, what that, or are they allowed to stay open?
Yes, so I apologize, I don't have a call list in front of me, but basically what we are looking is, right, we don't want to disrupt like food access and other services, so like the supermarkets are still open, and that includes Family Dollar, because they have those services as well. Pharmacies are still open. Restaurants are still allowed to operate with takeout and/or delivery options. There are some other pieces, but I think those are the main ones that folks are interested, gas stations, as you can imagine, fuel, which is moving up here and there, which might change depending on what the governor decides here in the next couple of days, but those are the ones I can think of offhand. Obviously, for government, we have, you know, define that in our own way of what's essential. So for public health, if you have limited public access at this point, we'd be closing our doors, we wouldn't change our hours, and we'll send that out, things like that. Medical clinics, vets, you know, as well as hospitals, obviously, are still to remain open. Some of those might be, that might change, but not as far as medical goes, but the governor's talking about whether or not we keep that open. Some of the non-essential, because we've had a lot of questions around that, are like, you know, hair salons and getting like nails done and some of the other basic stuff, just, you know, retail, like to get a T-shirt, like that's not essential in the sense of staying or remaining open.
I do want to take an opportunity to recognize that this is, of course, a new landscape that we are all entering into, and thank and allow the public to know that how diligently Public Health, the director and Public Health is working in emergency management as our law enforcement, city and county together. I know we've had the Families First Act come, our health, or sorry, our finance and human resources have worked to understand exactly how to apply those, and I think that across the board, all the entities are really working to just understand how these mandates for orders come and apply to us, and then how within the programs that are being created by the state and/or locally, how we're going to be able to utilize those now and into the future. I know that there's Main Street Committee and support for local businesses that are trying to advocate to continue to patronize our local business. Let me see, the school district is also here as a representative, and you even hear from Paul Anderson for a little update with their distributing food. Solvista has increased their staff capacity, and they do have telemedicine and referrals. They're extending their public access remotely. As I said, we have the Families First Act. Excel has stated their pledge to not shutting off residential services for valuable payment, and essentially Comcast and other internet providers are also pledging the same, that's come down from the chairman of the FCC. I'm looking at this list, so I just want to acknowledge the hard work that everybody through your staff and employees outside are doing for the community, and we're contributing, and this will continue as we continue our mission, how exactly this all unfolds and what this looks like.
Yes, so I just had to point out that Human Services is doing an effort along with all our nonprofits and other community organizations to try to meet people's needs, so we asked them to reach out to Human Services directly to see what those needs are as this landscape continues to change, and we're trying to streamline it in the sense of having a single point, or I should say multiple points for community requests. We'll be rolling that plan out here probably in the next week, so we ask you to be patient, but I really want to recognize, Jimmy, Danny, and Human Services for really taking the point on that. I have officially appointed them as volunteer management. They also are responsible for mass care and sheltering, so there are a lot of responsibilities on their plate that they're taking seriously and doing a really great job of notifying everyone to make this a single effort, absolutely, with the community fund as well.
So Colin, I think what I would like to dive into next is what the recommendation for us as the county is for the next seven days as one. For two, I'd like to talk a little bit about, or get kind of a pulse on what law enforcement is seeing around these orders, and then what to expect in the next seven days would be my anticipation of the district. So let's start first with what the recommendation would be for us at the county level.
Okay, so at this point in time, a lot of what our response plan was built around was on positive cases of COVID-19 in our community. That means that someone would be tested, and we receive a positive foul. Apparently, we have five people tested, two came back negative, and three tested for pending. The reality is, when we look at all of the communities and counties surrounding us who have had state support and some other opportunities for larger testing, they do have positive cases. It would be remiss of us to make the assumption that we are protected somehow in Lake County. I will say that we have COVID-19 cases in Lake County currently. COVID-19 is circulating in our county. We do not have a positive to confirm that, but we do not need a positive to know that. With that being said, I recommend that we go to tier three as a county, and that means kind of expanding some of our closures, really talking about what's essential for us to keep rolling, and folks should recognize that this is a response plan for city and county government offices specifically, but I think we're there. I think that we need to act now and protect our community now and not wait. I think we've been proactive through this whole entire response and not waiting for that threshold and/or trigger, and I feel that that's where we need to be now as a county.
The tiers, the organizing, hovering thing, can hold up?
Tier three is Lake County concerned. Employees will be directed to stay home. They are, if they're experiencing symptoms, still working, staggered shift, elimination of non-essential, essential needs replaced, departments to take additional steps. They must take additional steps, they gotta identify someone, limited exposure between employees and employees and members of the public. City and county building, new staffing, offers that are recommended. Flexible leave policies to be offered as needed by the agency and energy, protect welfare and helping employees to offer maximum flexibility and achieving broad safety goals. So would that recommend, recommend, excuse me, recommendation be to continue to be close to the public or to close and allow all workers from home?
I'd say close to the public and anybody that does not need to be in a building to work, to be home, obviously, working from home, and/or if they don't have that ability, it's not a necessary essential service, then they are home, and I know that in some other triggers, what that might look like in the human services world. I think that is important. I think, you know, kind of going to the next point that you had discussed, I believe that our governor will be moving to self-isolate as a state within the next week, if not tonight, if he will, so I think, you know, knowing that that's coming, let's just make sure that everyone knows where they stand, what they need to do as far as our county government goes.
Is that like a shelter-in-place order?
That one, sorry.
Is that what you were talking about, what the governor going to is that is shelter-in-place order?
Yes, there would be a shelter-in-place order. Nothing has come out at this point in time, but he has been following pretty closely with both California and New York have been instituting. I know that he is currently meeting and communicating with a lot of government officials throughout the state, and I think they'll be making a decision, and if it's not something sooner, I'm guessing it will happen within the week. So I think it's important that we're prepared and ready, and we know what our plan is.
Okay.
I'd also just like to reiterate that the order, your current order now is through April 30th, and that is matching some of the resources coming down from the state.
Yes.
As you mentioned, it's easier to pull that back than to keep the anticipation and not urge people to plan for that longer term. So I just wanted to reiterate that. I also, well, I also wonder if you want to take an opportunity to hear from Juan enforcement?
Yeah. Yeah, so Amy, Jake, and Sage, do you have any kind of input or comments towards implementing that tier three order and extending our disaster declaration for some days, closing those non-essential services at this point?
So I think we're going to start, we're already starting to see this kind of, couples maybe fighting a little bit more because of money, domestic house situations, which brought, so these were, it was interesting, because I've had these similar meetings with the sheriffs of Colorado regarding these laws, which includes, and I don't want to jump all over the place, but housing of the buildings, and so I think we're going to see a sweep in terms of the number of clients. My concern is when we put out these orders at county, and then what does that look like for businesses by state line and Family Dollar? That is a huge concern, especially for our elderly folks in the area. I've been approached, with the gas stations in town, why don't they just go to like a credit card, pay only, and close the doors? But I guess my big concern is around how, whether it's real or perceived, and how we address that, because I know as far as the law of the power, we still push the working or still enforcing laws, but as far as, you know, enforcing the health department laws, those are going to be with the health department. So if somebody is actively violating the governor's orders, law enforcement is typically not going to address that. So that's a, and I think that's a misconception because it's one of the things that come out from the governor, that they, when he says that people can get jail time, will be fined, there is the assumption that law enforcement forces these workers, maybe. So, yeah, I think we really may be taught as good of how we put this out, especially just what we saw in St. Louis and from the dollar with lack of supplies, that we're really worried about, some people that needed to have the info in our area, how are they going to get there and what they need?
We're trusting people to carry out those orders of their own, if you will. I don't want people to think that we're going to show up on their doorstep, use force to propose this kind of, it's not your state. I was kind of trusting people to use their best judgment to follow the regulations.
Sage, do you have anything to add from the city?
No, I agree, and as far as the stance of asking officers to be just be knowledgeable in the latest orders so that they can educate, and we are not in a position to be stepping in, obviously, and the rest of people are not having places to put them. Part of our law enforcement actions prior to this date, but since COVID-19, was that we are putting as few people in as few jails as possible and issuing out felony sentences. So that has been slightly challenging because people sometimes that are getting felony sentences are not heard of their behavior because of the sentence, so we need to deal with those people who are then caught in uses of forces and injuries to officers. So that is certainly concerning. We are doing our best to handle things by phone if at all possible, but we still are providing service to the community. And I would agree that there is definitely an uptick in roommates and domestic type situations, just because people are stuck in an area together, and that's just going to happen. You have my concern would be not having enough staff on the road as we need, because we need invited staff, and I know the sheriffs department has been directed to be visible so that people who are still out there and are still watching, that's, I guess, a concern going forward and scratching things down, and if people are going to be desperate, an opportunity resides itself, and so we just need to be the best we can, and keep our staff healthy.
Thank you guys for that update. Jonathan, do you have anything?
Sure, well, I certainly respect the law enforcement's perspective on not having to create more or having to do whatever they have to. There was a brief objection to the past judgment from the country, yeah, that yesterday talked about the implications. I don't think it's something that should someone violate, even though there's someone who has positive who is refusing to isolate themselves, that may be a situation where it's much to be gone to do something, and the question is, what can and should law enforcement do, what the courts can do in this case? With respect to the domestic violence situation, because there are a lot of mandatory appearances before the judge, I think there are things we are already discussing a lot on the bench to expedite the process, and so they don't go to the capacity, and so we just need to be very mindful that we have to follow CDC guidelines as much as possible, but we also have an obligation to follow them as fast as we can. I think we've done a pretty good job up here trying to use virtual processes to cater essential work business, and I think that's going to expand a lot, especially if this goes on for a significant length of time, to try to do things such as free iPhone, free running out, and other things, just so we don't end up either letting people either broken law or have issues in court, just in the cycle or in that, to try to identify ways we can allow them to access the court process and socially distancing, like that allows us to be taken care of.
So with the recommendation of closed county facilities until April 30th, what does that look like at the court level?
The court is still going to be open with limited public access. Obviously, if there's someone who has to appear in court needing to make a mechanism for that to be able to do so, to be expected that can be done without community visiting the president, if they make that happen, accomplish that. Same thing with victims, not the way to be present in court as well, the same conditions to do that as well, but the court will be open, it won't be business as usual, we will be following all CDC guidelines, but they'll open with limited public access.
Colin, I mean, we've been trying to keep up with a lot of news regionally, so do you have any recommendations for the folks that live in our community that commute to Summit County? I know that they have requested in Summit County, excuse me, for residents to not leave the county, but what does that look like for folks that commute from like two Summit forward?
No, I think that's a great question, and I think we need to be realistic about if somebody in our county is working in, because we have, the orders that we put into place today are the same, if not more similar to what Summit County has enacted, in the sense of, you know, movement and things like that. We have to recognize that we do have people who are working in essential functions, not just in our county, but in our neighbor counties, and so I think it's important that they, you know, have an opportunity to go to those jobs, work with their employer, to make sure that they are following, you know, CDC regulations and CDC PHE on how to keep them safe, and so, no, I do not look to bar anyone from continuing their job, you know, if it's still open, but I do ask them, you know, to mind all those prevention measures and to review with their employer to ensure that their safety is being met.
I'd like to ask a question about that.
Sure.
I got, you know, randomly, somebody asked me yesterday, we've heard that the lows to look back were going to be shut down, and so.
No, as far as we know, and we had a, I've kind of fallen into the Summit County manager that operated for this meeting to assure us that they did have a posting, he thought that maybe the suggestion to stay off the road and not travel outside of county were more geared towards the weather that was expected to come in, but they had no intention of doing any kind of border shutdown between counties and closed transit on border, I said the border.
I assume that would be the case, but the staff or just like everybody else, so.
Paul Anderson from Lake County, so you have an update for us on the school district?
Yes, to start with, started last Friday, we are being rolling into a seven-day spring break, so then we decide to extend to a 14-day closure, really not knowing what the extent with this year, if it's totally relevant or not. I'm hoping that through this 14 days, signs are setting, would present themselves and help limit the transmission for some person, so this 14-day closure does give us time to clean the buildings, and focusing on germ's that were there, would be dead, hard to unpack, folks reentering the building, so it's relatively evolving, and adjusting by the day, as the situation evolves. So we did meet on Monday, the main focus of that meeting, like, was just to get a basic plan around the food delivery, beginning next Monday, Monday to the 23rd. That plan is to deliver Monday through Friday, that is a week, to various sites, LCHS, high school out front, as well as vans for buses going to the east, not the west, Lake Forest, and not the US states, this quarter. An attempt to avoid gatherings larger than 10 groups, we're going to ask the folks, we just out at the curbside, out in front of their house, the vans will proceed through those communities, handling the route, so it's not a big mass bus stop. Do the hope, bring food to the kids, it is open to anyone 18 or under, it's not just for kids on reduced lunch, it's anyone 18 and under, we have, they have food. I would do plan to release final details tonight through the website, and we're spending time to start Facebook page, as well as text message groups that they have through this district verification system. Looked at them last night, or actually Wednesday evening, appreciate that the leadership of Governor Wallace signed an executive order closing tall schools statewide, so we do not intend to go back, it would be a week by week if we're allowed to restart school at that time on Monday or anything, so. As I've heard, we'll see, but the plan is to continue the food delivery through the entire closure. Based on that, executive order, did meet yesterday, essential personnel, building principals, principal director, district staff, via Zoom, to discuss a plan to build on learning plans, provide engaging opportunities and support to continue learning during the extended closure. The intent is not to fire up some online school, just proceed, but to get engaging items, help students that can help reduce the learning cost through the extended closure. Some of the items that we discussed, to prepare those packets for plans, would be to stagger staff coming into buildings with that principal or sites director to come in and prep for their students, and clean standard counters in between uses and when large, large group contact, as much as possible, and that will begin this coming Monday, that will be this whole night, we go, setting up some of those plans. Questions would be asked with parents, direct. Uh, if you have questions, it would be best if parents directed questions to their principal, to his school about their students. Uh, through email, because we don't have people have the answers answering phones and that'd be the best way for folks to do it. The answers will just be waiting for updates from CDC, PHE, and the governor on what more we can do.
Um, some of those providers on internet access for kids or homes that don't have internet. Um, it looks like this facility might be offering free hotspots, so if you search out there, maybe some early for the school to offer them, um, families.
Families, there are some organizations working on that.
They are working on that already?
We believe that maybe also global.
Oh, great.
Those work on that, so.
Good to know, okay.
There is, uh, worse, I've got another flag.
Okay, great.
Okay, so what's our next step coming up?
I think, um, we've moved to tier three in our response plan. And like to emphasize, and I think this goes back to law enforcement as well, is that, you know, this isn't necessarily a CDC cell or law, we know that. Not necessarily a time to panic, it's a time to prepare. We keep pushing those messages out, it is, you know, you can get on ready.gov to see what some things you can be doing in a pandemic, if you will. Our food supply is not interrupted, which is really great, we are keeping, you know, grocery stores open, fuel, things like that, to ensure that we can keep moving through our day to day. It's recognizing that all of these measures are to protect our most vulnerable population, not only here, but in our neighboring communities and vice versa. Because we do have so much trouble between those communities and it's really doing our part, it is, you know, it's, um, I don't know, silly, you know, or cheesy, it is like, it's part of the United States, this is happening across the United States, it's not just affecting Lake County. And we all have a part and we need to be prepared and, um, just plan and just be prepared, is the best I can say.
Is, um, Kaylee on the phone?
She is. Kaylee, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, and we're delighted to be here.
So Kaylee Hannah is our director of emergency management, is friendly on the phone.
Kaylee, um, in order for us to extend this disaster declaration, we want it to tier three, um, what's the proper procedure for us to follow at this point?
Well, no, but the actual declaration para, um, included some provisions, I don't think anything is, um, there's no big changes for our actual disaster declaration. Um, adopting the emergency declarations plan and all supporting documents and annexes involves, um, that response plan. And we can just update, um, city and county that we are moving into tier three, and I can change the language. So, um, it says Lake County has one degree confirmed other cases, or we are working on the emergency assumption that it is here in the county and community.
As far as we.
I think that would, um, you know, a little bit of ground to stand on that maybe change, while we can share, um, that change. Whether it will make any concern, um, even though we don't have a common intent yet.
Okay. And I can, um, planning to court verify that we will, every time we revisit to renew this declaration, it will be a new resolution, correct? So I am happy to read, um, this one into the record, the changes that were made, we're removing, um, specifically starting to a board of county commissioners meeting and a city of Leadville, a city council meeting, and adding some language, um, updating, um, the public health order is coming down to the governor's office. Did I do it right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Board of County Commissioners of Lake, an emergency resolution declaring a local disaster emergency for Lake County, Colorado. Whereas novel coronavirus results in the disease COVID nineteen is a highly contagious virus that originated in Wuhan, China, and has since spread to numerous countries across the world, including the United States. And whereas COVID nineteen can be a serious illness leading to severe complications and even the risk of death in the elderly or those with underlying health issues or compromised immune systems. And whereas on January thirtieth, twenty twenty, the World Health Organization WHO declared the worldwide outbreak of COVID nineteen a public health emergency of international concern, end quote. On January thirty-first, twenty twenty, the United States Department of Health and Human Services declared the virus a public health emergency. On March eleventh, twenty twenty, WHO declared COVID nineteen a pandemic, pointing to sustained risk of further global spread. And whereas on March eleventh, twenty twenty, the governor of Colorado memorialized a verbal order from previous day, declaring presence of COVID nineteen in Colorado constitutes a disaster emergency. At least in update, updated public order twenty twenty-two to include effective March seventeenth, twenty twenty at eight AM and continuing through April thirtieth, twenty twenty, restaurants, bars, cigar bars, gymnasiums, movie and performance theaters, opera houses, concert halls, music halls, and casinos are closed to ingress, egress, use, and occupy occupancy by members of the public effective March nineteenth, twenty twenty at eight AM and continuing through April thirtieth, the following places of public accommodations are closed to ingress, egress, use, and occupancy by members of the public. One, non-central personal, personal services facilities, and two, horse tracks and son- son pass facilities, also known as off-track vetting facilities. And whereas all the health experts anticipate that due to the contagiousness of the illness and the fact that numerous travelers around the world visit the county and surrounding areas and Lake County's veteran community to Summit and Eagle County, where over seventy percent of the Lake County community can do to work, Lake County will begin to see cases of the virus and its transmission within the community. And whereas the cost and magnitude of responding to and recovering from the impact of the ensuing event is far in excess of the county's available resources. And whereas the director of emergency management and the board of county commissioners of Lake County, Colorado are further authorized to declare a local disaster emergency for incident, incidents occurring within the boundaries and response area of the, on behalf of municipal corporations, special districts, and other eligible non-governmental organizations. And whereas pursuant to CRS twenty-four thirty-three point five dash seven oh nine and one, a local disaster may be declared only by the principal, executive officer of the political subdivision, which shall not be continued or renewed for a period in excess of seven days, except by or with the consent of the governing board of the political subdivision. Any order or proclamation declaring, continuing or terminating a local disaster emergency shall be promptly in general publicity and shall be filed promptly with the county clerk or city clerk or other authorized groundkeeping agency with the Office of Emergency Management. Whereas pursuant to CRS twenty-five one five oh six B five, six, seven, the public, however, Department of Public Health Environment has authority, six, to establish, maintain, enforce isolation and quarantine, and in pursuance thereof and for this purpose only to exercise physical control over property and over the persons of people within jurisdiction of the agency, as the agency may find necessary for the protection of public health. And has authority, seven, to close schools and public places to prohibit gatherings of people when necessary to protect public health. And whereas pursuant to CRS twenty-five dash one dash five oh nine to B, the Lake County Public Health Director has the powers to be, to exercise all powers and duties conferred and imposed on agencies not expressly delegated by the provisions of this Part Five to a county or district court. And whereas Board of County Commissioners finds the necessity to immediately activate the response and recovery aspects of all applicable local and inter-jurisdictional disaster emergency plans and to authorize the furnishing of and assistance under such plans. And whereas a Board of County Commissioner finds and determines that in this, in the best interest of efficiency, effectiveness, and public health and safety, that the director of the Office of Emergency Management has full authority to assign county personnel, expand financial resources, use emergency procurement procedures, suspend and reassign any county operations or policy to provide full support to the emergency response. And whereas in light of the unknown risk of public health and safety, at this time it is necessary to declare a local disaster emergency. Now, for, therefore, the result of Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake State, Colorado, that one, Lake County, Colorado has declared, declared a disaster emergency due to the presence of COVID nineteen in the surrounding region. A Board of County Commissioners shall, shall consider extending this declaration to at a duly known meeting within seven days of the date of this declaration. Two, the effect of the separation of local disasters shall be to activate the response and recovery aspects of any and all applicable local and inter-jurisdictional disaster emergency plans and to authorize the furnishing of aid and assistance under such plans. Three, the public health director shall continue to have the powers and duties conferred on her by CRS twenty-five dash one dash five oh six and CRS twenty-five dash one dash five oh nine. Pursuant to CRS twenty-five dash dash one dash five oh six, it is unlawful and un- and it is unlawful to willfully violate, disobey, or disregard the provisions of public health law, laws, or terms of any lawful notice or standard or rule. Four, based on the public health director's recommendations, public events scheduled to take place in county or facilities are suspended until further notice. The community is strongly, strongly advised to engage in social distancing and cancel any gatherings or events exceeding ten people. Does that make sense? Keep that as a saying, okay. Publicly scheduled meetings shall take place. However, county offices and staff shall plan for the public to virtually participate in such meetings online or via teleconference. These directives will be revisited and monitored daily. Additional restrictions may need to be imposed by the public health director as the situation progresses, including without limitation mandatory closures. Five, the director of the Office of Emergency Management and the county human resource director have full authority to assign county personnel duties not in their job descriptions, expand financial resources, use emergency procurement procedures, suspend and reassign any county operations or policy to provide full support in the emergency response as set forth in Resolution twenty eleven thirty-one. Six, the county human resources director has full authority to spend and suspend and modify all county personnel rules as necessary. Seven, the county building shall remain open to county employees as normally scheduled. Decisions about county staff remain on a case-by-case basis, taking into consideration county operational needs of the county and also considering public health advice. Supervisors should consult with the BLCC and human resources director, but have discretion to designate employees as critical to maintaining county operations. It is recognized that not all the work will be able to perform at, be performed at home and may require physical presence all or some of the time. Adopted this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty. Any other revisions, how many that would suggest in?
Um, with number seven, um, I'm talking about previously how, um, we, what advocates not have staff on with the premises that are not absolutely necessary, should we include that language in number seven?
Uh, I don't have it from you, so I think. I think it's covered by, um, just considering public health advice, we can, and it's not a, that we have a building, um, stacked. But it's kind of a fluid thing and people may have to come in and out of the buildings, um, LCSO, the sheriff's office is going to still remain in the building. Um, so we're going to have to talk about that, perhaps, in terms of these spaces.
Pretty fine.
Yeah, I think, but I, I think that that's covered in the, uh, priorities.
Okay, I just, um, know that we have, um, some stuff that helps in concerns and if they feel like they need to be home to work, I would encourage them to do so, um, through this, through this period, this seven week period. Um, I know our county staff is going to take the opportunity to get it from the next week to make sure that, um, the building is sanitized appropriately. Going on the staff, including, um, so I would just say that first and foremost, um, our, our priority is, is public health and the safety and wellbeing of our staff and their families and our community. And so, uh, if they, if the staff feel that we need to work from home, I would encourage them to do so at this point.
Yes, what does that look like for the pay? Cause that's been a question, it's been asked for a long time. So we are, we are looking here, there's some new, I think some new legislation that just came out. Chris, maybe you can elaborate on that for us.
Uh, what little I can elaborate, then President Trump signed into law yesterday, the family supports the effective response to the virus. And it provides for emergency sick leave as well as additional family medical leave, um, uh, to cover some of the issues. Um, unfortunately, the law itself, it, it, you can read it, it doesn't have much detail to it. And so the Department of Labor will be enforcing that law and they add seven days from yesterday to issue five in Saturday, what allows stuff, it's in there says. Um, but effectively, it does, um, it goes into effect, um, in fifteen days. So April second will be the first day it's effective and like I said, it will provide for emergency sick leave as well as family medical leave, especially for parents with kids, food, schools are closed and to allow them to take leave off. And essentially the first ten days will be paid for that. So unlike normal family medical leave, um, under federal law, that's often can be without pay. So we're still looking at all the details, Lori and I have been going through, you know, the information that's available right now and we'll be putting it out or something, but that can allow to allow the directors and such to understand how that's going to be implemented.
Why not the employees that have work from home? They, uh, because I mean, there's some things that we can do, but obviously that would be for forty hour or whatever the pressure is.
If it's, well, in terms of, are you talking about the folks who will be working from home?
Like around admissions, um, post-it mark, well, that happens.
Right, it, that will be considered as if they're actually here, so it's the same kind of work. They may will still be paid the same compensation as if they were here working.
Yeah, so we're going to have to work a lot of the information to, to all of our, to all of our, to, 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 to. Yeah.
Because the office was under money, they could not, because they said the third through the twelfth week under FDR LV would be paid for, for all employees, even employees who were prepared to stay home, but their kids were not school away. You know, and so I, I just, it's hard to know exactly what that means. And what it means to small, either to work, that could be quite different.
The federal government has, um, doesn't make funds to support these mandates for this, this new type of leave and such. The other thing too is that, um, you know, if there is a point where it becomes unpaid leave, the staff members that they have approved vacation, sick time, or are allowed to use that.
Is that the first two weeks in the year?
It actually, if they have beyond that first two weeks, for example, if it goes into unpaid, they can use the paid leave as well. But you can't make them do that, that's something everybody needs to go, you can't say, yeah, you can, you can say that you have to use your PTO or whatever, it's available, it has to be virtualized. But again, we don't have all the details and that's based on the version that was signed and a lot of speculation. We're hoping to get more clarity within the next few days once the part later starts coming out with good signs.
Um, Sheriff Grace, we'll, we'll be in contact throughout the week, um, more than department directors and other elected officials now. Um, what's on that, I guess, that's certainly a good call. So if you have folks that are going to choose to work from home, we just have them at the office.
So. We've asked, um, that each department kind of assigns somebody who's responsible for checking in on their phones to maintain the essential services of county government. Um, so, uh, I know to date, all the DPN or real requests have been met and I'm sure that maybe there will be some more after today. Um, so I encourage, we are encouraging county departments to make those requests and get those organized um, for, for staff that are assigned to check in, check the email, and, and assign those remove capabilities responsibilities, uh, as appropriate, um, some of the suggestions, you know, the pool is going to close, I mean, we are closed. So, so in the regular April, pool closure is moving up to tomorrow, you know, next week. And they're going to clean the pool now instead of April. Um, getting to some of those long-term, the long-term list of policies and fee drafting and, and all those kind of things that have been thrown back under by other demands or just some suggestions, um, that we've put out there and. that we've put out there and ask your fellow, your colleagues what's happening. I'm sure there's plenty of ideas to keep us busy. There are some free resources as far as, again, that mental health piece and the expansion of that. You know, I presume being isolated and, well, one, also with human services, if people are, are kind of getting aggravated because people are fearful and somebody's being exposed, they need to provide a request or reach out to human services for a request because those are some of the exceptions in this lodging that we don't have people housed at, at other lodging facilities. And then the list of mental health or, or just support or grow. So that's good news. Unless I was going to say, oh, there is also a short resource sent out yesterday. I think on telemarketing tips for, for small business owners or for department heads and supervisors. So online, there should be, it seems like there's a lot of things we can push down the cost to, to help us all through this transition.
Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything to add to the, the declaration or the resolution?
So I will make a motion that we adopt the resolution in 2020-38. Zero eight, extending the disaster declaration until March 27th, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion at this point on the disaster declaration?
No, I just, I just wanted to reiterate the public health order will go through April 30th. And because the declaration is revisited every seven days, we will be revisiting that. But right now, we're going to have anticipation that the public health order will be in the short, that on April 30th. Right, and currently that's short term rentals specifically to have reservations through April 30th. The public health orders, it is potentially to make a change. I just, I'll repeat that for folks on the phone. Sorry, the public health directors are also reiterating that short term rentals are mandated not to accept any further reservations through April 30th of 2020. And the deadline for people to make it is Sunday. People to make it is this Sunday, the 22nd, that's all.
All right, is there any further discussion at this point? Mark, do you have anything else? Would that win a favor?
Aye.
All closed. Okay, same then, thank you. Finally, we will get that resolution to have it according and get it out as soon as possible.
I have a question for calling in.
Yes.
When, when will we know more about what non-central businesses have closed and when will it roll right up?
So it's in the public health order and it details about all the businesses specifically. And obviously there's some that might be oddball, so we need to catch real well. And we can, you know, push that out through the city, if you business licenses it. But it goes into fact to make it five again. So like retail food or should you tell, like stores have the ability, if they have their servers up, they can do things online. And people can say, hey, I always meant to get that pot holder on the second shelf on there. And then they have the ability to buy it, like credit or the phone, and then they can walk it out of their store and give it to you. One of the stores are, at this point in time, they are not banned from now because I think it's, it's. They are sort of now on the centuries, groceries, the first family hall. But it's all outlined. No, I can't, I can't, we have three percent alcohol. I understood. See, oh, let's stand up to the quarters specifically, but we do have it all outlined in the order. And I appreciate we do have the votes for third, like people forgot about X, so like, oh, let's make sure they know that they can't be able to put it, it's, it's pretty detailed on the map. And we did put the press release out as well, moving this to Spanish, kind of trying to, considering through a six page chapter, we'd like to put on features, but I should imagine we may just launch this as that will be handled.
Greg, what does this look like for us to be canceled?
You know, you know, my intention is to follow the county's lead. Definitely good, you know, if China doesn't want to second city, that's another reason for us to be really, so, you know, we are intention to follow the lead and follow the county.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Are there any further questions on the public health order at this time on the disaster declaration?
I have a real concern here and that is that you declared an emergency here and you don't have a P I R replaced to be certain of all this information.
So we actually do, but I say mine's a public information officer, but.
Well, we haven't, she isn't, she's not here. So how do we get this information out of the public?
So it's already been pushed out through Betty today to both the public today as well as the Herald, as well as person on our Facebook, as well as we've been pushed out. So Betty is on that contact for us specifically.
And the same thing, when you do all that pushing out through Facebook, I'm pushing out through the county specifically as well. So I think I'll be driving that home from all over the place, but anything you want.
Yeah, so there are other ways, like around that, it's nobody asks. Betty is involved, we have a call every morning with O E M, myself, situational awareness and our P I O, I had one as well, to keep us both in the loop. And obviously relying on each other for eyes and ears and that kind of thing, but open to feedback on how we can do better. So totally wish you that.
I just want to make sure that I probably understand and notice about what's going on.
No, I appreciate that.
And this is a pretty good thing.
Well, that's, that's the important thing. Yes, no, I actually appreciate that and yes, and I do, it is fluid in the sense of, you know, I just got this order that goes into effect at 5:00 p.m. But the governor could learn something out in the next hour that totally changes everything. And so I just wanted to reiterate, like when you see it, I see it, I don't get heads up. And then we're working rapidly, we now have really good system in place to make sure that we have folks on call for translation services, which is very important, make sure that's getting help to our community all at once. First, like some folks that have, so sometimes there is a lie, I do go, and so, yeah, I'm just trying to keep following people. Back at the age of trying to, as I said, I'm totally open, seeing enough of you, I'll answer.
It's a critical resource.
And you have, I've been keeping up as well on there, H S U G H D dot org has a COVID-19 page. They continue to update that, I mean, they're doing some really great work of ensuring that vulnerable populations don't have to come to the office and things like that, like I cannot put a package, just because you come to this, your folks have got an holder, they can tell you off. And now we have these, the telephone, I think we're getting, doing next to that also.
I have two questions. One is, is there anything in place here for those that are, the element that are having compromised to have pre-store hours to get into the store as higher.